Donahue?
Here.
McKnight?
Here.
Roa?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Here. If you would please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you have a cellphone, I watch, or any cellphone, if you would mute it, I'd appreciate it. I will try to remind you to turn it back on at the end of the meeting, but I'm always good at that. Public comment. We have three items on public comment. Mr. Hall, if you want to give us your name and address?
Sure.
Yeah, if you go to the microphone.
You want me to go to the, okay.
It's being recorded tonight.
Okay. Certainly different. Hi, my name's, I'll spell for you, it's Jeff Hall, G.E.O.F.F. Yeah, I know, I have to explain that, I know. 524 East College Street, Meadville, Pennsylvania. That ain't anything else or anything?
Nope, that's all we need, make sure you're there.
All right. Well, I'll keep it brief. I'm here on behalf, I'm here talking about a potential idea for the city of Meadville. It's an idea that we have run through council, Meadville Council on the Arts and various other ideas, and they asked me to speak about it. We would, what we are talking about is, as we know, with Halloween coming up and trick-or-treat and No Halloween Parade, many places around the world in the country are encouraging communities to decorate their yards for Halloween. And it got us to wondering about putting together a contest for people in the city of Meadville that would decorate their yards for Halloween. It would be something that the community members could go out and see. And then we would get a, you know, judges who would then look at all the yards and pick a winner. Maybe that family gets a, you know, gets a trophy that they can put on there. While there's something, it might be a good way to get people involved in the community, get them outside. It's a good socially distant thing because children and families can drive by, just like they do at Christmas time, and look at the Christmas lights. They can drive by and look at the Halloween decorations all over the place. So that's kind of, kind of our proposal. What we'd be looking for from the city is just help with, like, publicity and, you know, getting this note, getting this out to the community because, you know, my resources are pretty limited to Facebook at this point. But we thought it was something to certainly bring to the council's attention because it may be something that, you know, could become bigger and bigger, or maybe it'll fall flat on its face, but the only way to find out is to try.
So you would have a, your organization would be doing the project, then?
Yeah, I would, I would spearhead the project myself. We were talking about, we're talking to potential judges or something like that. We just want to make this open to the entire, you know, Meadville community. We want to make this open to everybody. And I just don't have the pull to get that kind of information out there to everybody. I don't have the reach.
Andy, permitting, anything like that?
Nope, I don't see a reason. I mean, all the displays are on public property outside of the public right-of-way.
I think it's a great idea.
Isn't this normally something, it reminds me a few years ago when the beautification committee had an award, wouldn't this be something to be referred to the beautification committee?
If it's an, I don't know, I think myself it's a progress, I mean, you could go to the beautification committee.
Yeah, I just kind of didn't know where to go next, so this seemed like a good place and then it started.
Yeah, so I serve on the beauti, my sense is that if it were a beautification committee, it might just circle back back in the same way that, I mean, because the beautification committee doesn't have its own, you know, Facebook page or website or anything like that, but if that's the coordinate, you know, if that's the, who we'd want to designate as the liaison, I imagine they may be open to it.
I think the Tribune, they're a good publishing company, so could help a lot with that. Armstrong is recording tonight. We have a webpage at the city that, you know, we could put it on our webpage.
Yeah, the idea would be that families could submit, and I could even set it up through a Facebook page or something, a little, just, you know, two-minute video of their yard for judges to then, you know, look at and go, "Oh, I like, you know, I like this," or, you know, to look at, and then encourage people in the community to go out and drive around, and the judges would certainly go out and look at all the house displays and then, you know, pick a winner.
I have no problem with the council. Jim?
It's not going to cost us any money.
No, it's not.
Mr. Hall, so unclear, is, you had referenced the Meadville Council on the Arts, is that, are you a volunteer with the Meadville Council on the Arts, or you just approached them similarly?
I have approached them similarly. I've done a lot of work with Council on the Arts and the theater department over the years. My father also sits on their board of directors as well, so this is a collaboration with him, so he is going to bring it, he has mentioned it to them, and I know he's planning on bringing it up again at their meeting, which is tomorrow, I believe. Yeah, Lee's not in tomorrow.
Excuse me one second. When, the downtown business, didn't they do something kind of like this when they decorated? Couple of years ago?
They did a scarecrow contest several years ago, and the Chamber will often do decorating contests in downtown around Christmas.
Those are two individuals that you could probably contact to see if you want to, like a, I'm sorry, celebrity judging, you know, so you don't have to reinvent some of the wheel.
Yeah.
But, because they all, I think they all have their websites that they could help advertise it.
That would be great.
So, I mean, there's avenues out there for advertising.
Right.
Low-cost advertising or no cost.
Okay.
And we can announce it at our meetings.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea. Anything to change the, you know, this year's been a really crazy year.
Yeah, and that's, like I said, I thought it was a good socially distant, you know, thing that, you know, kids love going out and looking at, you know, people's yards and seeing everything. Would be nice if, you know, people are actively competing to get, make their yard the best they could, and then, you know, that would give people something to look at.
Sounds great. So you don't really, we don't need to make a motion or anything, we're just going to support you?
Yeah.
Do what we can to help you.
Yep. All right, thank you so much.
Yep, thanks for taking the time. Lee, you wanted to speak on CDBG.
Hello, I'm Lee Scanonero, 230 Mount Pope Street. Yeah, talking about CDBG. I want to begin by commending City Council on their desire to fund the Crawford County Coalition on Housing Needs request for our emergency shelter operations at South Main Place. Without this shelter, families with a dad and a mom would not be able to stay together during their most vulnerable times. No other shelter in this county allows for families to stay intact in this way. I hope that using CDBG funding for this project is noting a shift in council priorities towards safe and affordable housing. As we know, the city of Meadville is in a housing crisis. Fifty-two point five percent of renters in Meadville are considered cost burden by HUD, which means they spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing and utilities. And according to the Housing, the ALIS report, this is not a problem of lack of initiative, but a combined problem of a lack of safe and affordable housing, as well as the lack of access to good jobs with a livable wage. I think the city can make real progress on housing if council has the desire to do so. Many of the decisions you all make on a regular basis are directly related to housing. Unfortunately, I've seen that the city has a history of supporting profit-driven housing initiatives over the development of safe and affordable housing opportunities. I don't say this to sound cruel or to even criticize, only to point out these distinctions in the hope of moving forward together. Just one recent example is the tax break that City Council voted to give to Calmar Construction totaling at least a million dollars for the development of units starting, I think, at fourteen hundred dollars per month. To be clear, Calmar Construction chose Meadville not to provide safe and affordable housing, but because they believe they can exploit profit from the residents here. Fourteen hundred dollars per month is not affordable for most of the residents who live in Meadville. I know I certainly could not pay that. Meanwhile, in the South Main Street neighborhood, a group of residents from Common Roots is working tirelessly to rehabilitate an existing home to provide safe, affordable housing units. Common Roots actively chooses to continue to pay their property taxes. Even though they are nonprofit, they could choose to seek abatement. But because they live here and care about this community and the financial viability of the city, they continue to pay those taxes. I was disappointed to see the council did not consider Common Roots's application for assistance in completing this renovation. And this is not an indictment of landlords or for-profit companies. They certainly have a place in our community, but they frankly can't solve the needs for safe and affordable housing any more than TOPPS can solve problems of food insecurity in the city. It's not their purpose or mission to solve these problems. They have different ideas and motives. To conclude, I again appreciate the city of Meadville's assistance in funding the Crawford County Coalition on Housing Needs Emergency Shelter. Housing is not an easy problem. It's time-consuming, personal, and pretty boring also. And I hope that this year's CDBG funding represents a shift in priorities for the city towards supporting safe and affordable housing development. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Patricia, you signed up to come in to speak to council. Do you own a business here in the city of Meadville?
No, I work for an agency.
Okay. Your home address is in Vernon Township?
Union.
Union Township, okay. Normally, it's open to the taxpayers in the city of Meadville or business owners in the city of Meadville.
The company that I work for is in the city of Meadville.
Okay. Are you representing the company? Are you representing the company?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm going to afford you the time.
Okay. Patricia Gleason, 7654 Dutch Hill Road, Meadville, Pennsylvania, 16335. I work for UCIP of Meadville. We serve an agency, we serve individuals in the community, a lot of them in wheelchairs, some people walk. Because of COVID, we have to be in the parks a lot. And we have to use the restrooms there. We're finding problems with not having toilet paper, not having hand sanitizer, soap, hand air dryers, things like that in restrooms. Shady Brook Park has a wooden restroom, and if you weigh a little bit more than me, you will find out how the floor is not that strong. And it didn't have anything in there, and there was no porta potty there to be used either. There are some issues at some of the other parks, too. There's a lot of other agencies and children that use these parks. And their health and safety and well-being matter. And I would like to see it addressed. I don't know if this is the right place to go to, but I'd like to see it solved.
And I take it you use our parks more than Vernon Township or Union Township?
Oh, yeah, in town, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you use Vicentennial Park? We have restrooms down there.
Oh, yeah, we use that, too. There's no soap of any type. There's no way of drying hands in there, yeah. They do have a COVID sign, but that doesn't help us. We can read, but we can't wash our hands.
Your Honor, I'll review that with the Public Works Department.
Okay. So we're going to give it to the city manager. He'll talk to the Public Works Department. Andy, can she get back in touch with you?
Yeah, we'll follow up. I mean, I don't know what follow-up is necessary, but I'll review it. I mean, we can, I'd be glad to give you a call if you can provide a phone number.
Okay.
You can just write it down, or you can give, I don't expect you to give it publicly here, but if you write it down and provide it to me, I'll be glad to follow up with you.
Okay.
And you said you use the parks every day?
Yes.
In the city?
Yes. Monday through Friday, for sure.
All right, well, thank you. Andy will be back in touch with you if you just give us your number somehow.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you. That's all on that. Katie, thank you. Andy, COVID-19 update, please.
Counsel, just remind us all that we still operate technically under a disaster, declaration of disaster emergency, which will continue until further action by council. No local specific updates necessarily, but city staff will be monitoring. Earlier this week on Monday, a federal judge declared unconstitutional orders from the governor's office with respect to stay-at-home orders, public gathering sizes, and business closures. And so we will evaluate sort of what that means in terms of public permitting, events, et cetera. Don't have any guidance coming out of that yet, but I imagine there will be interpretation of the judge's action, and so we'll evaluate what that means to the city. And I think that's all.
Counsel, just so you know, this morning I had a nice conversation with Allegheny College President Link this morning on a number of different issues, but one of the issues that we were talking about, she wasn't going to be able to be here this evening, but she had some bullet points that she wanted to share with council and with the community on the process and their plans, how it's going along. So I asked her if she would send those bullet points to Andy, and Andy, if you would just take a few minutes and go over the bullet points.
Sure, Your Honor. So President Lake reports that Allegheny is just, this week is in their third week of classes with nine more to go. So at the end of this week, we'll actually be a quarter of the way through the fall semester with an early planned date, essentially November 20th will be the last day of in-person classes on campus, at which point students will disperse, go back home for the Thanksgiving holiday, and continue online classes. So after this week, they'll be a quarter of the way through the semester. President Lake reports that they've tested every student upon move-in using what she calls the gold standard PCR test, and then they retested every student a week later to attempt to catch any false negatives. They've had a few clusters that they've popped, you know, popped up and have tested. So in total, they've done 3,426 tests with 27 positives, most of whom have finished with isolation or quarantine, and they believe they only have three active cases who are currently isolating off-campus. Starting next Monday, the 21st, they'll continue systematic screening, doing, conducting six antigen tests each day, sixty, I'm sorry, of various representative campus, campus groups, faculty, students, athletic teams, attempting to identify, spot check for, identify positive cases, and then isolate and contact trace as needed. Reports that all students, faculty, and staff are required to wear masks at all times on and off-campus and to maintain physical distancing and wash hands. And then they've indicated the college is taken very seriously in terms of discipline with respect to students who violate the Gator pledge, which promising to uphold mitigation efforts that have been described and implemented on campus. And she reports that so far, seven students have been sent home to learn remotely for the semester for violations of that Gator pledge. So she just wanted to share that information with council and the community.
The last couple of weeks, I've been taking walks to try to get healthy. Yeah, I've been going through the campus, and I do want to share, most of the, all of the individuals that I have saw on the campus had masks on, distancing. I think they've really done a great job in making them aware of the issues that we have. So I told her that this morning, that they've done a great job in helping with the city, making sure the city's updated on information. So, council, any questions that maybe you might have?
I wonder, is, would there be any need for, like, in public spaces, I know, like, I'm thinking, like, Lloyd's Rental has those, like, hand washing stations that, you know, they might have outside of, like, the restrooms, like Thunder in the City or something, you know, the kind that stands outside. I wonder if there'd be use for those in some of our public parks. I'm thinking, like, in the diamond, right, where you can't necessarily wash your hands anymore. There's not really a public restroom unless you go inside City Hall if it's open. And if, if we could do that, if, like, the county funds would cover something like that, would make the hand washing available.
Under the funding?
Right.
That's a good question.
If I can inquire with the counties to whether or not it's eligible. Of course, it's not, it's not a budget expense in our budget, but we can see if it's an eligible reimbursable expense that they would consider under a future round.
Did we put porta potties on some, I thought we did put some of those in our parks, right?
Yeah, in parks that don't have restrooms. So not in Diamond Park, but, so HP Way Park, for instance, has one. Lincoln Avenue Park has one.
So is it their responsibility to make sure that there's toilet paper and hand stuff?
They are stocked as part of the contract with sanitizer, and so in those cases, we'll have to review. And some of them were maintained by our staff as well, so we'll have to redo that.
I'm trying to, I'm tying the two together, so, that's a good idea. I thought we did put porta potties out and hand washing stations.
Well, just porta potties that have, in, they have a dispenser inside.
Yeah, I'd like to check on that. That's good. Thank you. Maybe something the county could help with. Any other questions? Andy, thank you for the update. Notice of executive meetings, Katie?
Your Honor, an executive session was held on September 2nd, 2020, to discuss real estate and litigation.
Motion to approve the minutes.
No move.
Second?
Aye.
Question? Vogel?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Okay, you have communication.
Your Honor, we received a letter from the Crawford County Firefighter SCUBA team. It is part of their annual leather, leather fund campaign, and they are noted that they are celebrating their 50th year of service in Crawford County. The SCUBA team is comprised of fire departments from around the county, and they are asking for the city's support, noting some of their most recent investments with funds raised by this drive.
Counsel, I'll report that certainly, in terms of the city's participation, we do budget in our annual budget a $750 contribution that was made around the first of the year back in January from our 2020 operating budget. But I would encourage interested citizens to explore what they do and perhaps support the SCUBA team in their efforts. They are, like I said, a combined group from combined fire departments across the county who specialize in water rescue, which is very important, obviously, with French Creek in our backyard.
We appreciate all their efforts they take for going.
Andy, how would folks find information or be able to?
Well, I'm not aware that they have a Facebook page or other outward, other public presence. They're located at 20487 Ryan Road in West Mead Township is where their facility is, and that's the address on top of the, this letterhead here. I suppose if folks are in fact interested, they could contact our office for information.
Or probably any local fire department.
Right.
Volunteers, because they all work together jointly. Andy, manager's report, please.
Your Honor, just for your radar screens of what project you're working on, in your, excuse me, I included, there's a few maps prepared by Bennett here. Sorry, my voice is getting scratchy. So our stormwater system is, if you take this first map, which is an overview of just the yellow lines, you'll see Grandview Avenue and DeVeau Drive. There's a yellow line diagonally going across what is private property through backyards, which is a public stormwater line, which carries public stormwater. Our crews were in there within probably the past two weeks or so to camera. There was a concern by the homeowner, we've camered. But essentially, as we uncover and work through these instances, we look to enter into easement agreements with private property owners so that we have access to the line to clean, to maintain, to repair, replace as necessary. So Bennett is working with the homeowners of that section between Grandview and DeVeau, and there are two then smaller close-up maps of which property owner's on Grandview. So the property owner of 275 Grandview and 289 Grandview, a small portion on the back corner of their property, we would look to enter into an easement agreement with. And then as you head east towards DeVeau Drive, two impacted properties there as well, 268 and 278 DeVeau Drive that we're working with. So Bennett is working those. We've, we've got sort of draft easement agreements that Elizabeth and her office have reviewed. So potentially at the next meeting, depending on where we are with those homeowners, most of whom I think, or maybe all of whom have expressed interest or willingness at this point.
One is already signed, two have agreed to sign, and the fourth is pending.
So we might have those teed up for a future meeting, and there are pre-standard easement agreements that we have in several other locations where we have stormwater infrastructure and private property. So I just wanted to put that on your radar screen. Unless there's any questions from there, I'll move on.
I have a question.
Sure.
Just from my own knowledge, what constitutes stormwater equipment?
Equipment?
Mm-hmm.
Or infrastructure?
Both, actually.
So, I mean, infrastructure to us is a, is a catch basin, a pipe, a weir, a holding detention pond, a rain garden. What else would I miss in terms of infrastructure? Curb? Sure. And then equipment would be equipment that Public Works, so the backdoor truck to suck out or jet rod or with high water pressure, clean those lines. Probably the main piece of equipment that we use is a street sweeper as an integral piece for our stormwater system maintenance. And then, of course, standard backhoes, track, you know, dump trucks, et cetera, for excavation.
Well, I have a concern. None of that exists in my ALIS. There's no curb, there's no pipe, there's no catch basin or anything, but I'm paying a stormwater tax. How is that?
Sure, so it's a stormwater fee. We don't consider it a tax, but it's, the fee is to maintain the entire system in the city. So the, that pipe, the pipe in these neighborhoods, right, in this property, doesn't serve just their home. It serves their entire neighborhood. Rainbow Lake Dam, for instance, which is a high-hazard dam, which is our responsibility to maintain, which probably protects two-thirds of the city in terms of flood, stormwater maintenance, is a citywide asset that we maintain. So the stormwater fee is assessed to all developed properties, uses the impropriety area of a parcel as a surrogate for demand on that system citywide. So just like you pay your sewer or water bill, it's very much a utility model. It's much like you pay your sewer or water bill. You're not paying for the, so when the pipe broke on North Main, right, just those North Main homeowners weren't charged for the pipe in front of their house. All the rate payers contributed towards that expense. And so that's how the stormwater program is sort of set up, similar to a utility. So there might not be infrastructure in your house, in your backyard, in front of your house, but everyone pays to maintain the citywide infrastructure system.
I just, and I'm just going to say this through, I have a problem with that because I get rainwater in my basement, the street. I've been, I've spoken with you, Lee Roy, consistently about the deterioration of that, and there's nothing, I understand next year that it's supposed to be paved. When I spoke with Mary Ann and asked her about it, she said none of that equipment would be put in, no curving, no drainage, not existing, so...
So CDBG funds can't pay for that, so obviously, well, I mean, I'll be glad, I need to meet with you in person. We, I know we've talked generically at a 10,000-foot level. I guess I need to get there with you, with me and Nathan, and to determine exactly what concerns you're facing, and I'll be glad to do that.
Okay, thank you.
So moving on from stormwater, I had given you notes, we, there, Vernon Township held a meeting a meeting of several municipalities probably two weeks ago or so, looking at an intergovernmental cooperation agreement, particularly for snow removal and winter maintenance, and specifically with, considering the possibility, right, that a COVID infection or quarantine order of someone's public works department might leave a municipality shorthanded. And so we're looking at an agreement, intergovernmental agreement whereby we might share manpower in that situation. So there is a draft circulating in my inbox that I need to review and comment on, get it to Elizabeth. I think it makes sense. I think it's a good effort. There's about, I think about a half dozen municipalities that are potentially going to participate. So just putting that on your radar screen for future discussion as well. We had been talking about the, throughout the summer, right, in terms of refinancing existing debt. There were four bond series that we had the opportunity to go to the market and refinance. That happened last week. So the new 2020 C bond series was issued, marketed and issued last Wednesday. The overall interest is 1.1046%, so an incredible interest rate, with a net saving after, savings after all costs of $720,440 initially, better than initially forecast. I think we were in the 600-something. I didn't, I don't have that spreadsheet in front of me. Was it 620?
Maybe 60.
Yeah. So, so a good result there, right? So that's essentially refinancing existing debt on existing terms. So we hadn't changed the term of any of those. But we'll take those savings and reduce debt reduction over the next two budget years, '21 and '22. So a good positive outcome there. In terms of upcoming events, this weekend will be a busy weekend in Diamond Park. Friday evening is the, beginning at 6:00 PM to midnight. It's just Friday evening. It's not a 24-hour vigil this year, but the Prisoner of War Missing in Action vigil held annually in Diamond Park is from 6:00 PM Friday to midnight on Friday. There's not an associated ride this year either because of COVID concerns, but there will be a vigil in Diamond Park from 6:00 PM to midnight.
How are we controlling the crowd? Or how's the crowd being controlled?
So their COVID safety plan requires them to provide masks and social distancing. It's not a, I mean, it's a large space. It's not a huge, typically in prior years. It's not as, I don't know that they would have the 250, exceeding the 250 limit, but they're aware of that and have addressed that in their COVID safety plan to us. Then Saturday morning, the Alzheimer's Association, who would typically help hold an annual walk, Saturday on Diamond Park in front of the city building on our, on city building side of the diamond, will hold sort of a drive-through event from 9:30 to 11:00. And that's the Alzheimer's Association, and that'll be, so a portion of Diamond, that portion of Diamond Park will be closed through, through traffic, but they're promoting a fundraiser through this drive-through event Saturday morning. And then later in the afternoon, New Beginnings Church is holding a Repent Crawford County event from 2:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon in Diamond Park. And I don't have, what's the description of that event, Katie? Is that a?
It's to raise awareness for the National Day of Prayer, which is September 26th.
Got it. Thank you. Speaking of events, Voodoo Brewery had approached the city and PennDOT looking to hold a 5K race on September 26th, and were proposing to use 6 and 19, a portion of Bessemer Street. So from the Voodoo compound on Bessemer Street, a portion of Bessemer Street, and then they were looking to use 6 and 19, the southbound lane, one southbound lane up to Stan Road for an Elton Bag 5K race. 6 and 19, of course, is a state route, which requires a permit from PennDOT. And we've spent quite a bit of time over the past 10 days evaluating that. So PennDOT's requirements have long required for the closure of a state route for not only the applicant, so Voodoo Brewery in this case, to indemnify, hold harmless, and defend the Commonwealth. They would have, we require that under our policy too, for a permit on a local street. But it turns out PennDOT's regulations, what they've not historically enforced, require that the city of Meadville indemnify the Commonwealth. That's an indemnification that I was not comfortable issuing without a discussion of policy decision of council, because we're not involved at all in the planning or conduct of that race. It's, there's some significant risk inherent with that of the city as a municipality indemnifying PennDOT as well. So that's long been a PennDOT requirement, but they've never upheld it. So we were required to issue an indemnification, and we've never been required to before. The Chamber of Commerce has closed Park Avenue as state route for Thunder in the City for five or more years running. The Halloween parade, when it was on North Street in particular, required a PennDOT, a permit from PennDOT, and we were never required to provide that indemnification. What has changed is that permit review is now conducted in Harrisburg by the Office of Chief Counsel of PennDOT, who is triggering that. And so we did not offer that, and PennDOT's permit has been denied by, I'm sorry, Voodoo's permit has been denied by PennDOT. I've offered them our local 5K race route as a potential alternative, but we've not heard back. Long story long, though, is I'm going to come back to council with a future policy discussion as to whether or not we would, for future events, because inevitably there will be, whether it be for a future Thunder in the City or some other event where a closure of a state route is required, we'll need to visit whether, via policy of council, whether we support that and would provide indemnification to the Commonwealth.
So the way the Halloween parade runs now is on South Main Street, which is still a state highway, correct?
It is not. South Main is a, South Main is a local route. Diamond Park is local. The Lower Chestnut is local. Market is local. Now it crosses over Park Avenue as state route. But then it disperses at the end of Market. So the, the route that they run for the past several years is all on local streets.
Andy, with the 5K, have you ever thought about just doing Terrace Street extension out to Stan's Road and back?
We've, I propose as a possibility, but one of the reasons, we have one designated 5K route in the city because it requires, A, because it's dangerous, right? So that proposed route, depending on where you would start, and you need somewhere to start where people can gather, park, et cetera. So you, say if you had the permission of CNJ Industries, who owns the former Penn Plaza, presumably that's where you would vest stage and start. That requires you running through the Reynolds Avenue intersection and the Spring Street intersection, which I think we've, we think are inherently too dangerous for that purpose. So that's where we're at. Long, again, I'm going to come back to council with a future agenda item with more information about this indemnification policy.
Doesn't our new parade and special event policy require that they have insurance that indemnifies the city? Would that carry over? That, no, no. It's not we.
Right. So they can indemnify us, they can indemnify PennDOT, but they can't trigger our indemnification of PennDOT.
Changes all time.
Western New York Pennsylvania Railroad will begin, begin to place a track crossing on Mercer Street. So Mercer Street, of course, is the Blue Bridge over here, the Mercer Street Bridge. So beginning Monday, the 21st, they're replacing the sidetrack that goes over to the Smucker's Plant. That's the set of tracks closest to the bridge. So they will be closing Mercer Street from the bypass to 102, including the bridge. It'll be, it'll be open ideally four days, Monday through Thursday. Okay, that has changed from the information that I have. So Monday through Friday. So all of next week, it'll be open to local traffic only. So presumably Hydro Blocks, McGill Power and Bell are really the two primary businesses there.
Plumbing.
And the plumbing shop, that's right. Thank you. So just for the public's awareness that that'll be closed all of next week for the track crossing replacement.
Fire trucks can get over there, correct?
Yeah, they'll be able to.
Look at the traffic, yeah.
Fire trucks can't cross the bridge anyhow, so they'll be able to get to, up to the track replacement in the event necessary. And they've all been notified of that. City-related contracts with respect to paving are now complete. So all local federal aid routes, there was a couple of sections of Grove Street that were completed last week. There's just a few punch list items, but of course PennDOT out there is on Park Avenue. They began just this morning, the base coat on Park Avenue from Baldwin Street heading north on one, on the northbound lane. And then as you go out of town to the East Side, State and Washington Streets is still under construction by PennDOT. So we urge people to use caution in those locations. The city's annual audit, our 2019 audit, is nearly complete. I've got the management and management discussion analysis to complete. And once that's done, it'll come back to council for review and acceptance, maybe sometime in October.
He'll do a presentation, I think.
Correct, yep. And I think that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, any questions for Andy?
Yeah, I have a question. Andy, my fellow East Enders have been contacting me wanting to know when Porter Street footbridge will be reopened. They don't care about the ribbon cutting or any hoopla. They just want to be able to use it.
So what we're still waiting on is the, there's fencing along, that we are going to replace a good portion of the fencing along the bridge approach.
Okay.
On the...
On both sides?
I...
I know there's some on, on Walnuts.
I can visualize the other side, not the Walnut side. I think it's mostly on the North Street side that we plan to, that we, well, sections will replace. So as you might imagine, that's a cumbersome process with PennDOT, but there are additional grant funds left that would allow that, a good portion of that fence to be replaced.
Time frame, are we, we have to let bids out?
The continent, the general contractor that would do the work or do it through a sub, so we don't have to do any bidding. It's really the contracting process and approval for PennDOT. If I gave you a date, I'd probably give you a wrong date.
Any other questions for Andy? Old business discussion establishing trick-or-treat date and time for 2020.
So counsel, just by way of reminder, when we left this two weeks ago, I think it was a majority of council that chose or were desired to hold it on Saturday, October 31st, which is Halloween itself, from the quote usual time, 6:00 to 7:30 PM. In the, and I was going to go back and talk to my colleagues, particularly West Mead and Vernon. West Mead proceeded to establish their trick-or-treat date as a traditional Thursday before from 6:30, 6:00 to 7:30. So they're going to hold in the quote normal trick-or-treat date. Vernon is, has not finalized yet. I think it's their October 1st meeting. They will finalize, or they had, I think they expressed interest in holding it on the 31st or would consider that, but were interested in holding it earlier, either from 4:00 to 5:30 PM or 4:30 to 6:00 PM. So that's where Vernon lies. My office did not receive any public feedback from anyone in the community. I don't know if you as individual council members have, but...
I have.
So that's, so I'm done. That's where it stands now. Now the rest of you can debate. The most important decision of the year.
I just would point out, like, some streets are both West Mead and city. Jefferson Street, one side's West Mead, one side's city. Glenwood's got both sides. Just, Baldwin is West Mead on the end, on one side, and city on the other. Not Alamo Bubber.
Yeah, not Baldwin, Baldwin's on.
No, I know it is, because I have a house on West Mead.
Yeah, right past it.
And I have a house across the street to the city.
Um, not an issue I feel incredibly strongly about, but people, you know, people did weigh in. I mentioned last time they put out those surveys. It's still very strongly in paper of Saturday, so that's where I'll throw my support, support of Saturday evening trick-or-treat.
We're going to stay on Saturday as well.
If you move it to Saturday this year, you're going to end up having to change it next year. If you're going to develop a policy, why don't you develop one that makes sense and doesn't have to be amended every year? I prefer Thursday. The school districts have already accounted for Thursday by having a work session on Friday morning so the kids don't come in with a sugar high. If you're going to change to the Saturday, I know Borough Greenville has it early in the afternoon. I could support that if it's early enough that people can get to the Halloween parade. But I can't see doing it at 6:00 to 7:30 this year and then having to change it again next year because we most certainly will have to change it.
I've had a couple of people contact me. Pros and cons on both sides of it. Both talks that I've had, can't argue with them. The pros are that, you know, that the kids have had a rough time this year. They've left school early. They haven't had what I call or they call a normal year. And they think it's great that we would have a trick-or-treat to begin with. Some were concerned about the safety on, on the exposure of the virus. And I'm, I'm believing that, one, common sense can rule here. So if you prefer your children not to be out there, go and send them out. Pretty close. If you don't want to participate, don't turn your lights on. Easy answers. If you are going to participate, use some common sense. I know I plan on using gloves and making sure that the candy that I purchase are individually wrapped. I'm also going to require that the kids only come up on the porch if they're with a family group. I don't want a bunch of kids on my front porch. You can control that as a property owner, and the kids can still enjoy themselves. I, I just want to see the kids have somewhat of a normal summer, because everything has been so screwed up for them. You know, you go to Walmart, 90% of the people are wearing masks, 10% aren't. You can't control what the world's going to do, okay? So I'm going to support the trick-or-treat, and I, I'm going to encourage to be on the 31st. That is Halloween. I know next year we're going to have to change it because the 31st is on Sunday, and I'm sure that that will go over. But it gives us an opportunity to make changes, you know? I appreciate working with all the townships and everything else, but I represent the city of Meadville, not Vernon, West Mead, or the other townships. So I, I think that we can help educate individuals on how you trick-or-treat, use common sense. I mean, that's, that's just the bottom line. So I'm going to stick with the 31st. I'm going to stick with the, my personally, the 6:30 to 7:30 argument. You made a really good point. You got people eating dinner. I mean, I would be willing to start it at 5:30 to 7:30. If you're going to change, make a difference. But I'm willing to have it on the 31st, the time, 6:00 to 7:30 is normal. That's my personal feelings. So, so we do need a motion. So, someone like to entertain a motion? The one of the two.
I'll move to hold the 2020 trick-or-treat night on Saturday, October 31st, 6:00 this year.
I second. Discussion? Any other further discussion? Roll call.
Donahue?
No.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Pass.
Please use common sense. We're going to have another meeting before the trick-or-treat, so we'll try to, you know, come up with any other safety that you can use. But just use common sense. And if you really don't want your kids out there, don't send them out. You don't want to give candy out, turn the light off. Pretty simple. Authority boards and commission appointments. I don't think we have any to do with.
No, so just by way of update. So obviously, counsel, the last meeting, council established various representatives from council to meet with each individual board or authority or commission who has vacancy. Those have been, have been notified of who the council representatives are and have been asked to select their own representatives. Some have done that, who've had their September meetings already. So that's in process, and staff will begin to coordinate multiple interview meetings. By looking forward, though, to the end of the year. So there are 16 letters went out to individuals whose terms expire at year end. And under the policy that council adopted, they've been asked to identify in writing their interest in continuing to serve, and we've, they've been given a deadline of September 30th to respond. Of the 16 letters that went out, I think we've heard from three. Is that three who wish to, four total, three who wish to continue serving, four who has, wishes to end his service at the end of his term. wishes to end his service at the end of his, uh, term. Um, so technically by the policy, if there's no response by September 30th from those individuals, those seats are technically deemed vacant. Now, I don't know how full, how that works, right? Because we also send out every year an ethics form that requires about a dozen notifications and reminders to get those back by, uh, by the deadline. So, um, we will probably attempt to notify one more time of those individuals, asking them to reply with their interest in continuing to serve.
Uh, just so you know, Andy, uh, the redevelopment authority and, and, um, myself and Larry, we have, uh, three interviews already set up for the redevelopment authority.
Good.
Just to be open and transparent, we did receive another application, but it came in after the deadline, and if we're gonna follow the guidelines, you have to follow them. So, that individual, we can possibly add to a future.
We could hold the application, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna, get this policy, this following. So, we're gonna be meeting with three of them, um, with representatives from the RBA board, I believe this week, right? This week to next week?
Friday.
So I just wanna be transparent, we did receive one, but it did not get here in the amount of time. Anything you wanna add to that? Okay, under new business discussion, social media, archiving and compliance?
Uh, Katie loves when I do this, but I'm gonna kick this over to her. Um, so, and, and Bennett might chime in at some point too, 'cause both of them have been involved. Uh, Bennett more on the IT, Facebook side. Um, so we only have one social media account, we, which is our Facebook page, um, Office of the City Manager, um, which is the city's official Facebook page. We don't have Twitter or Instagram or other social media accounts, uh, but supposedly could in the future. Um, but essentially, um, under the Open Records Act, essentially any of those, and I'm, I'll shut up, because I'm gonna, Katie's looking at me waiting for me to, to mistake. But essentially, comments, posts, et cetera, are considered records under the Open Records Act, and there are, there's increasing case law on this. Um, essentially, the difficulty of Facebook in particular, on how we can save, record, and obtain those records, uh, is why we're looking at, um, a social media archiving and compliance, um, service to help us do that.
So Andy explained it pretty well, but, um, under Pennsylvania Open Records Act, and there is case law in Pennsylvania that supports this, any social media posts, comments that are put on those posts are considered a record under the state law, uh, which means if somebody were to come to the city and request, do a right-to-know request, asking for that post and any comments, we would have to provide it. The issue comes in that Facebook, in their terms of agreement, explicitly states that they have no responsibility there. They do not have to provide us with access, and they don't have to provide us a, a way to source those comments. Uh, additionally, in Pennsylvania, under the Superior Court, screenshots are not permissible in a, in a court of law. So we can't even just go on and screenshot those records. Um, the other issue is that if someone were to go on and delete a comment or edit, which we know happens quite frequently in the Facebook world, there's no way to track that. Um, just for a frame of reference, on average, a municipality will pay out thirty thousand dollars if they're found in violation with the social media records. It's been as low as ten thousand and as high as seventy-five thousand. Um, so it could be pretty cost prohibitive to not be able to supply that. Um, the company that we have been talking to is out of North Carolina. They serve three thousand different agencies, and what they do is they archive in real time. So as soon as somebody posts a comment, they capture it and put it on a backend that Bennett, myself, and Andy would have access to. Um, Bennett, is there anything that I'm missing there?
No, that pretty well covers it. Um, as Katie was saying, so it's a cloud-based service, it links up with the city's Facebook page or other social media account, and in real time, any comment, private message, whatever it is, it captures it as it comes in, and if it's edited, deleted, uh, anything beyond that, it captures those changes as well, and stores it in its own separate database. So even if, uh, you know, the whole Facebook page got deleted, everything would still be there in records kept separately.
So I got a question, because on my Facebook, if you ever look at it, it's food, wildlife, jokes. Um, can Facebook, can, can the city have a Facebook that is only informational? Like, no one can make comments back on it? We, you can't, so-
You get into a First Amendment issue there, um, and actually, that, that's something that we've talked about. Um, we do have a comment policy on our Facebook that says what you can and cannot say, like, uh, excessive profanity or, um-
Physical threats.
Mm-hmm.
So what's this cost gonna be to taxpayers to do this?
So, under this company, it would cost us, uh, two thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year.
A year?
Mm-hmm.
That's gonna be more than that, how much was it?
Two thousand three hundred and eighty-eight.
And does that cost the same if we were to add, as Andy mentioned, other social media accounts?
So that, that plan would cover multiple social media accounts if we were to add it. Um, there are other features that we could add that would increase the cost, but none of those are, are things that we felt that we needed, and Andy tended to agree with us. So that would be the cost that we would be looking at going forward.
So if someone files a right-to-know,
Mm-hmm.
whose time, energy, and resources are going to be consumed, the company's or ours?
Uh, it would be a little bit of both. Um, most of the records are stored in the backend and easily accessible by one of the three that have access. Um, so in standard process now, if we get a right-to-know request, it comes usually to me, and then I pull the information. If the record is such that it is overly complicated, or I'm having issues finding what I need, I can contact the company and they will help us fulfill that request free of charge.
So if we have twelve thousand comments on an issue?
Mm-hmm.
Or if the request was, provide us every comment made since you opened your Facebook page in two thousand and sixteen? Um, you know, would require quite an extensive, I mean, we get those, right? We get, not, we've, I don't know that we've ever received one on our social media page, but we get broad-ranging requests, and sometimes we, under the act, we can narrow those down as best we can, but your staff spends a lot of time on responding to open records requests, and consulting our attorney on open records requests. I think at this point, it's, it's a cost of doing business. It's either do not have a, as a public entity, either we don't have a social media presence whatsoever, or we work with a vendor such as Archive Social to, to provide the tools to comply.
So when you say social media, I'm, you guys are more up on this than I am. But are, are we talking our website, is that part of social media?
Technically, yes, so our website is subject to right-to-know as well.
Okay. But that's only informational, you, you don't communicate back and forth?
Yeah, on our website, we don't communicate back and forth with, with residents, there isn't that feature.
Okay.
That's not to say in the future, there won't be. Um, so we, this, the, the website is kind of static, so we're not as concerned about that as we are with social media.
Okay. So Facebook, is there anything that we use as social media? Instagram, we don't?
We don't.
Any of that?
Facebook is the only account that we have now.
So is it worth having the Facebook, I mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Blessing and a curse, but yes.
Okay. So it's a cost of doing business, the two thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So is this company reputable, I mean, do you guys have a background?
So, they've actually recently began working with the city of Erie on their social media, and Bennett has been in touch with the, the gentleman who, uh, manages it in the city, and so far, he's seemed pleased with the, the product that's been presented. Now, they have a much more complex, uh, package, and they do a lot more with theirs. Um, but they, they've been pleased with it.
And this contract's yearly?
Mm-hmm.
Can we go out, uh, benefit go out more than a year, lock in the price?
I don't know that that's something that they, they do. Um, we can certainly ask them.
I think it's just an annual subscription.
And because of the cost falling below a certain threshold, this is not subject to bidding requirements?
Yeah, and I, I mean, I assume it's a professional service as well.
A professional service, okay.
Comments, counsel?
It's an unbudgeted expense, we were inclined to proceed sooner than later. I mean, we're, we're gonna be three or three-quarters of the way through the fiscal year anyhow. And I think, um, do they offer a special pricing if we would proceed before the year end as well?
They, they offered a proration of the cost, as well as some, some free time thrown in if we wanna get started before the end of the year.
Uh, I do have a question, does this go retro back, how?
That was my question.
Yes.
How far back should go?
I can speak to that, so the, anything prior to the start of the archiving, uh, any deletions, anything prior to that can't be archived, because it no longer exists. However, for posts or comments, videos, anything that was put up prior to the start date, anything new on those, so if somebody goes back to a video we posted a year ago and makes a comment today, that would be included in the archiving and any changes going forward. So, it captures what's there at the start date and anything beyond it, but anything that's changed prior is lost to time already.
Do you have any questions?
That, that answers it.
Any other questions? We need to, uh-
No action tonight, we'll come back, get to our next meeting with a resolution to authorize signatures on the contract.
Thanks. Uh, resolution authorizing the twenty twenty CDBG grant application.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas Act 179 of nineteen forty-eight established the Pennsylvania Community Development Block Grant CDBG entitlement program to assist municipalities to address a number of community development needs and problems designed to benefit low and moderate income citizens. And whereas the city of Meadville's federal fiscal year twenty twenty allocation of three hundred and eight thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars is available for a wide range of eligible projects, and the city conducted an initial public hearing on May twenty-second, twenty twenty. And whereas the city of Meadville and Crawford County have entered into an agreement for Crawford County to serve as the applicant on behalf of the city per the Department of Community and Economic Development Guidelines. And whereas the projects contained in the CDBG application address needs identified in the three-year community development plan and principally benefit low and moderate income persons. And whereas a final advertisement was published identifying the projects and activities to be undertaken with the city of Meadville's twenty twenty CDBG entitlement funds, and a second public hearing was advertised and held by the Crawford County Commissioners on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Meadville does hereby approve and authorize signatures on the federal fiscal year twenty twenty Community Development Block Grant application, contingent upon the outcome of the federal fiscal year twenty twenty income surveys. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Meadville authorizes Crawford County to incorporate this application within the Crawford County application, and authorizes the Chairman of the Crawford County Commissioners to sign on behalf of the city of Meadville. Said application is to be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development by October second, twenty twenty.
Motion put.
No move. Second?
Second.
Question?
Counsel, I'll just note for you quickly, so of, one of the, so when you go to the city paving, um, so the third page in is the, of the proposed projects and breakdown. The prior version included Arden Place, uh, which is a very short, um, stub of a street, uh, that really only has one resident on it. Um, we, we were actually able to do a base layer of paving there already, so we removed that. There, there was a small number for paving of Arden Place that's now included in Walnut Street. Um, and so we, we're still in the throes, we have to, evidence that all of these meet income guidelines, and so we're still finalizing the, the surveys, but because the application is due October first or second, I believe. Um, thanks, Larry. Um, but this appears to be the final list. I think Mary Ann indicated today that based on the information she's collected so far, that everything here should be qualified. I just wanna note that Arden Place funds that were there are now been moved to the Walnut Street line item under the city paving activity.
So the housing coalition that Lee was speaking about was on this for fifty-two thousand?
Correct.
That is for roof replacement?
Yes.
And I, I guess one of the questions that I had, I wish Lee was still here, but Joe, you're here. You're, you're involved with the house down in South Main, correct?
This is a, so this is the housing coalition?
Right, no, the, the, I'm going to a different area. 'Cause there was money requested for that, wasn't there, through the application? And it was not accepted in, it was denied. Okay, um, the reason I'm asking that, is there a possibility that I can get a tour through the, the house? I mean, I'm, to see.
Sure, I don't see why not, you wanna contact the board or Julie Wilson, who's the president?
Look, they'll shoot, some of you down there on Saturday.
Yeah, they do regular work every Saturday morning.
Okay. And wait, I'm just curious, what, what was the request for, for that resident, for that, that property?
Well, that was something that you all talked about, was it a month ago? That was one of the proposals that was on the table?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember the specifics, I had to put together the application. I'm just a member of Congress, I'm not on board, so-
Oh, you're not, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, all right, I'll check with them. Questions?
I will just, uh, make, uh, two quick comments. First, um, I, I'm, I'm glad to see, right, that the emergency shelter has made an indoor application, and also, um, park improvements. Um, I think that this is, to me, that this is, makes an exciting and compelling, um, community development project. Um, another thing, I, I tried to log in to the, um, the second public hearing, um, and there wasn't a passcode posted on the county's website, um, to get into that meeting. So, something to be aware of, as we hold public hearings virtually in the future. Was able to get it via text to Zach, but I don't imagine other people would have that.
So did the public not have a chance to have their input?
Um, I don't know, I, I don't know how many, like, there wa, I didn't hear other public, um, asking questions or anything, but I don't know if that's because other people, like, I wasn't at a computer, I called in, and so I don't know if-
What does someone ask or?
Other people might not have tried to get in, I don't know what the, um-
I'm gonna ask our solicitor, so I'd like to have that answer. If the public had the opportunity-
It was a county public hearing?
It, it was a joint public hearing that the county had.
The counties are applicant, they apply on our behalf and hold the second public hearing.
Right.
We'll have to investigate the resources, I don't, I don't know if it's a legal question yet, but we'll, we'll have to investigate that, see what happened or how it was advertised.
So what's that do to this now? I mean, we're required, 'cause I sign these things as the mayor, so we're required to have two public meetings. I wanna make sure that that second meeting, that the public had the opportunity to go in. When does this have to be signed and dated?
For October second?
October second.
Well, that's, I mean, we have to prove it.
You understand where I'm going?
Yes.
I wanna make sure that the public had their, the ability to-
That it wasn't an actual public hearing, right?
So it may delay us approving this tonight, is my, my point there.
We won't have another meeting between now and October second.
Okay, so we're gonna have to have another meeting somehow.
Well, can the resolution be sub, amended to include, to be subject to confirmation of?
You understand all of my concerns?
No, I got it.
Yep.
Okay, so whatever we need to do to fix that.
I'll move to amend.
Second. You made a motion to amend?
Yeah.
You second?
Let's be right, I think we have to vote on the motion to amend first.
Correct. Roll call?
Donahue?
Okay, roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
I, McKnight?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
And to be clear, to amend it, to make a contingent upon, I mean, what is the amendment? Is, is contingent upon satisfactory evidence that the, that the public had, generally had access to the-
My inability, the technology.
Then it just wasn't on.
I was kidding. But there was a valid, that the hearing was a valid, open to the public.
Follow the rules.
Yep.
Any further discussion? So do we need a motion then?
We have the motion. We amended the motion. Now we have to vote on the motion.
Okay. Rule call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Would you send us a text or something? Let us know about that?
Send you an email.
An email?
If you want a text, I would send you a text.
Whenever this discussion...
We will follow up with you.
All right, thanks. I just want to make sure we're on the right track. Motion to authorize...
Nope, you're on letter C.
Resolution recognizing Chuck Larson. Katie?
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas Chuck Larson has served as a valued employee of the City of Meadville Public Works Department for 41 years, and whereas Mr. Larson began working for the City of Meadville in the Comprehensive Employment Training Act program on August 13, 1979, and whereas Mr. Larson was promoted to the position of city electrician, a position created for him after demonstrating his skill set and added value to the Public Works Department, and began serving in that capacity May 24, 1981. And whereas Mr. Larson has performed the duties of his office with dedication, thoughtfulness, and professionalism, responding to countless after-hours calls, call-outs to protect the citizens of Meadville and saving city taxpayers countless thousands of dollars. And whereas Mr. Larson has elected to retire from active employment with the City of Meadville effective September 11, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville that City of Meadville electrician Chuck Larson is hereby commended for his many years of dedicated service to this community and its citizens. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville that the best wishes of the city are extended to Chuck Larson for every success in the future.
Motion, please.
No move.
Second?
Second.
Jim, I'll serve you. Any comments?
Well, I wish Chuck a happy retirement. He retired Friday, and he came back to work yesterday. So we hope he keeps doing that for a while. We need him.
Happy retirement.
I just want to thank Chuck. He really puts his heart and soul in what he does, and I'll tell you, I've seen that man on top of that bucket in some pretty rough weather, especially when he hangs the Christmas decorations around the city and putting banners up for organizations. So there were so many things that Chuck did that, you know, we just drive through town and see things being done, but like all staff, certainly appreciate him. I'm glad he's back for at least end of the year, I guess. So we wish him a partial retirement, I guess you might say.
I would just note, so in terms of, you know, an example of Chuck saving the city money, right, so we had applied for a grant, Council authorized standards on it, but to convert all of our city-owned light fixtures to an LED fixture, 349 of them or something. And Chuck was injured last year and was off on leave, throwing a little COVID, throwing a few other extra emergency projects, and we were up against the wall and we thought of Chuck's retirement, and we said, look, we're just going to go to a contractor to get this done. I mean, it still made sense to do. That would have been $21,000 of contracted labor of time, and in the last three weeks, Chuck worked night and day to replace 349 light fixtures before he retired. And so he was bound and determined before he hit his retirement date that those would be done.
We might want to give him to him as a gift.
No, but that's how much, that's just an example of how seriously he is committed and dedicated to his job in this community.
All right, thank him for all his time and effort. Rule call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
He, resolution recognizing Diana Dietrich for wanting a retirement.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas Diana Dietrich has served as a valued employee of the City of Meadville for 26 years, and whereas Ms. Dietrich began working for the City of Meadville in parking enforcement and dispatch on December 17, 1991, and whereas Ms. Dietrich was promoted to the position of finance clerk and began serving in that capacity on January 1, 1993, and whereas Ms. Dietrich elected to retire from the City of Meadville the first time on January 1, 2012, and whereas Ms. Dietrich, who missed her coworkers so dearly, returned to the city as a finance clerk and began serving in that capacity on June 16, 2014. And whereas Ms. Dietrich has performed the duties of her office with dedication, thoughtfulness, professionalism, humor, and humility. And whereas Ms. Dietrich has elected again to retire from active employment with the City of Meadville effective September 11, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville that City of Meadville Finance Clerk Diana Dietrich is hereby commended for her many years of dedicated service to this community and its citizens. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville that the best wishes of the city are extended to Diana Dietrich for every success in the future.
Motion, please. Motion, second?
I'll second.
Discussion. I'll start with Sean. I mean...
One of the faces I saw when I went in the city hall every time. It's harder to replace these people. I just want to keep coming back and helping out. Good luck. Keep your retirement. Have fun.
Yep, I wish Diana the best.
Yeah, I wish her the best.
Jim?
Yep, she did a great job for the city both times she was here, and even though she's retiring, she is going to go back to work somewhere else part-time. But she, this way she can go and see her children and grandchildren, so we wish her a happy and long, healthy retirement.
I want to thank her for all the year's service to the city. Again, dealing with the public isn't always a fun treat, but she always seemed to be able to take care of the situations and get the information back to the public. And I do know where she's going and looking forward to seeing her again. So we wish her the very best, and with that, rule call.
To executive session, Your Honor, to consult with our solicitor.
We're not there yet.
Oh, yeah, and you could vote too. Sorry.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
I told you to make the meeting quick.
Sorry, I'm ready, ready to go.
She listens real well. Council member statements. Jim, I'll start with you tonight.
Okay, thank you. This is the season for politics and yard signs. Unfortunately, we've already had stolen signs, vandalism, graffiti, and even a shot-out window. That kind of behavior, it's rude, it's dangerous, it's illegal, and it violates the First Amendment. Whether you like what someone else says or not, they have the freedom to express themselves, and you have the right to be offended. That's how the system works. So no matter how you feel about other people's opinions, please respect their rights and their property and their right to have a different point of view. Because it's only because we protect the speech of others that our freedoms of speech is guaranteed to us. That's all, Your Honor.
Yeah, I agree with Jim. I'd just like to thank everyone for showing up tonight. Just remind everyone, COVID is still going on. It's still active. I know it's tough. I don't like wearing my mask myself, but I'm going to do what we're supposed to do to help alleviate this problem. And I'm looking forward to finding out more about this Heidi Cooper program that I seen at the, in the pavement there. It's, I'm really excited about seeing that you guys are putting money into the park. That park holds a dear place in my heart. Grew up playing basketball, having a good time, and I would love to see other kids in our city be able to use that and enjoy it.
Sure. I was recently able to virtually attend the annual conference of the U.S. Federation of Worker Cooperatives, and there were some really exciting ways that communities are making it possible for businesses to stay in their communities, to continue to employ people by supporting business owners who are looking to retire or leave the industry, supporting them in selling their businesses to employees. I would like to explore how that's possible in Meadville to keep some of our businesses going that employ people and that do a service to our community. And so if folks, especially business owners and employees are interested, please reach out to my email at the city site, and we can see what we can do here.
Thank you. Sean?
I'd just like to say I was glad to see sports are making a comeback now.
I missed a sports report.
I just, Meadville won their first football game last Friday night, I think it was. It was on TV. It was against Titusville, and I think they play Old City this week. Big Ten's going to have football again, and I don't know if Jerry's going to play. I haven't heard anything yet, but I don't know what's going on yet with any of their players, because a lot of people are opting out, because they're afraid to catch anything. But anyhow, it's kind of fun. Pro basketball's on TV, and it's kind of interesting with the sideline, people at home on TV. It's kind of fun. But that's about it.
I want to thank you for coming in tonight and giving us some ideas to do for the Halloween to, just to make things a little bit different. If you're driving through Meadville, especially North Main Street or North Street, Washington Street, Park Avenue, give yourself a little bit of time, because they're milling, and I believe they've already started blacktopping part of Washington, or Park Avenue, I guess it was today. So just give yourself a little bit of extra time. Take a deep breath, relax a little bit. Same with the colder, you know, there's a lot of businesses that are requiring the masks to be worn. You know, just be considerate and follow the rules, the guidelines. It's to protect you and everyone else. And sometimes we just need to take a deep breath and be thankful for what we do have. We could be in a whole lot worse shape than what we are. So this, just try to stay positive. You know, the winter is coming, so try to stay positive with those thoughts, too. So with that, I'll ask for adjournments to...
To executive session.
Make a motion, we during...
Second?
Second.
Rule call?
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.